And not a big difference to the United States of America and to one nation. In this world of their original justice.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda unless anybody has any amendments.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March fourteenth.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pat, could we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, the board met briefly before this evening's public meeting and executive session to discuss pending litigation and real estate items. My votes for taking the decisions made.
Thank you. And that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public here or on Zoom? I see there is Joe Luise and Robert Markey. Does anyone have any public comment? Okay, moving along. Announcements, does the board have any announcements?
Of course, open tomorrow. Be there every square. Looks nice from what I'm seeing.
All right, you Mike?
Yeah.
Anything?
No.
I think the board would. Today was Bonnie Winter's last day, our budget and finance manager. So the board wishes her well. I don't know if you have any words to say on that?
No, I think she did a good job while she was here. She left on her own accord. She got another job, so. Like you said, we wish her well.
And she'll be in the neighborhood, so we look forward to working with her in the future. Michelle, is there any correspondence?
No.
Yeah.
All right, Mike, that brings us to you.
Okay, we have our day opening for spring and fall cleanup. We receive two bids. Hello. Our L E. And their bid is twenty nine ninety-three to the yard. Next one is Marky's. Their bid is twenty eight ninety-five yard. So I will make a motion to receive the bids.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Um. I will make a motion to award to R L E, which is G N S Containers. Provided we have the okay from our solicitor.
Who?
Who?
Huh?
Marking was low.
I mean, twenty nine, oh, I take that back, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, we're all.
Sorry, got it.
Yes.
Just wanted to see if you're on mute. So. I make a motion to award to Marky for twenty eight ninety-five yard.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr.
Hey.
Thank you.
All righty.
Okay.
That's it.
Still you.
Oh, treasures. Make a motion from our general account, sixty-one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and four cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion from our sewer account, fifty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion from our golf, twenty-five thousand eighty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. That's all I have.
Okay. So now what to the solicitors report?
Thank you. There are two items on my report. The first one. Being is volunteer tax credit associated with municipal real estate tax. If you recall, we talked about this previously. And I believe I was just going to go and get the resolution. That sets forth the criteria to be eligible. And there's nothing in there that says otherwise. So yes, the answer to the question is. Those individuals that volunteered that qualified to be considered a volunteer for purposes of the volunteer tax credit. When they file their their credit application with township based upon the criteria in the resolution. If they qualify, it would be one hundred percent of the real estate tax owed to the township, which would include. The fire and E M S, which are part of the real estate tax assessment.
Okay, so.
I don't think there's anything, there's nothing for you to do that's already in place. You've already adopted those ordinances in the resolution, so there's nothing further for you to do.
It's exactly the way it was the first time we talked about it.
Yeah.
So that's good news.
The next item on the agenda on my report is C C P base three, section five plan. This is a plan that's before my time. But my understanding is it received a conditional recommendation from the planning commission. Back in. Two thousand and thirteen. And that resolution incorporated a number of conditions. That they needed to comply with prior to securing final plan approval. And the latest engineer, township engineer review letter from November of two thousand and thirteen. Outlined the conditions that they needed to comply with. Or issues with the plan that they needed to resolve prior to securing final final plan approval. It's my understanding that that plan has continuously been, the time extension fraction has been extended for a significant period of time. In the current one, the current time extension expires in June of two thousand and twenty-four, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. So the reason it's on your agenda this evening is, one, to see if you want to discuss if you had questions about it. Two. To determine whether or not you'd be inclined to consider further time extensions on it. Or three, if you would prefer to. Go in a different direction. It's been sitting for quite some time, given time extension before, but. Given the fact that it's kind of sat stagnant for an extended period of time, do you want to consider? Maybe denying the plan based on the latest review letter from the township engineer at the time, which was Riley Associates. If that's the direction you go, I would suggest or recommend considering this evening going in that direction, but at least. Authorizing a letter to go to the applicant notifying them that. You're considering that the plan is stale, it hasn't moved in quite some time. And that if you don't receive some revised plan, or if they don't start resolving the conditions. On or before your, I don't know, if you want to consider one of your May meetings. Or April, I don't know how quickly you want to act on it, but one of your next meetings. That the board is going to consider acting on the plan, which in this case will likely be denial, given the fact that those conditions of the latest review letter have not been satisfied.
I agree.
Mark?
I would say write the letter, Pat.
Everyone does hear that?
So your motion, Mark, is to write the letter?
Yeah.
Direct this.
To write this letter to. Let the applicant know.
Say? I couldn't hear you.
Let the applicant know the plan is in danger of being rejected unless we see some sort of updated. Plan of it.
Do you want to give a date, Mark, as to when you wanted to consider it? Did you want to do the first meeting and did you want to give a deadline of the first Thursday in March, excuse me, May? Which would be May ninth?
Yeah. One word.
You know, so a letter, by the time he gets the letter. He'll have till May ninth. Does that sound good to you?
True.
All right, so a motion's been made.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those are the only two agenda items under my report this evening. I'll probably maybe ask some comments or guidance for other agenda items later on in the agenda, but nothing specific to me at this point unless the board has something for me.
Nope, not at this time.
Yep, thank you.
And we're still in zoning and power with the engineers report.
Yep.
I've been over here with three items, one of eleven thirty-five Sierra Trails.
Yep, yeah, we have two projects, the first being, as Mark said, eleven thirty-five Sierra Trails. It was a minor subdivision, plan application. And the planning commission at their last meeting made a recommendation to reject that plan. Given that they had not addressed our comment letter dated back on January ninth. Of this year, and also they had not provided a wave of time requirements to extend. Timeframe and Michelle, myself both. Tried many times to reach out to the applicant to get a response and. Did not hear back for quite some time, so. The, I guess the motion to be considered tonight would be if you wanted to reject that application on those grounds.
Yeah, it would be, it would be potentially a motion to deny the subdivision, the minor subdivision plan application for eleven thirty-five Sierra Trail to drive. For tax not parcel number zero nine, one eight B, one thirty-four. Based upon the outstanding conditions and issues associated with the plan set forth. In the January ninth, twenty twenty-four township engineer review letter, as well as. In accordance with the planning commission's recommendation.
Motion.
Second. I mean, have we, so for discussion, have we heard from them at all?
No.
Now, have we?
And another, maybe just another little aspect of this as well is that there was a zoning violation that was determined dealing with the applicant and. Some conflict between the applicant and the neighbor with the subdivision. It was basically a lot line adjustment between their properties, so. Some kind of muddy waters with that, but also. I know Michelle tried multiple waves of reaching out. I myself tried calling and emailing and. Yeah, it was over weeks that we tried with no response.
And the basis of this is a shed?
They were, as in what, the zoning violation?
Well, what was the minor subdivision for?
The minor subdivision, so there was a, I don't know, I would say roughly like a quarter acre. Area that was like, it was basically the flat hole portion of. His neighbor's lot that he was basically purchasing and trying to incorporate into his lot. He had built a garage with some other improvements over his lot line onto the neighbor's property, so. The intent for this minor subdivision was to rectify those issues. But the surveyors, their original application did not even have a full survey of the adjoining lot. So it was missing a lot of information that was necessary. And then once he kind of saw that there was a little more involved, he just kind of went unresponsive with it. That's kind of a brief summary of.
I think there were two different surveys too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Different survey.
Right.
So that didn't help him.
Yep. And then there was talk about them having closing with a rushed timeframe. There was. He was pushing for us to be able to push this through at a very quick timeframe. And got the first review letter and basically then didn't. You know, we had a couple conversations and then there was nothing after that.
And when did the time expire?
Today.
Today? And then you can go then, no, it's very kind of expensive, right?
Okay. Okay.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second. Does anyone else have any questions? Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So the second project, that's the Otter Lake Camp Resort. They were in a minor subdivision application as well. So this one is in the R one zoning district. I don't know if you all have plans here, Alice is trying to present, but. I speak in generality, so it's right off of Marshall's Creek Road. Existing lots about twenty-two acres, they're looking to subdivide off a two acre portion and then have remaining twenty as a second lot. They issued before the planning commission last week and got a recommendation for conditional approval. Based on addressing the remainder of the comments in our review letter. Those are not too substantive, various minor land revisions, and then the only thing they have left to do is. Basically getting per testing for a secondary septic site on the larger twenty acre parcel to be subdivided. And so I guess the first item dealing with Otter Lake tonight would be. I guess consideration of a recommendation for conditional approval. The the second item would be pertaining to, they had two modifications. I don't know if it makes sense to do the modifications before initial approval.
Yeah, typically the waivers you do before, but before. Are there a few that the board need to? In your review letter, I thought there were a couple that maybe the board has to weigh in on. Maybe they'll they'll link the road.
After. It's the scale of the drawing and the several, right?
Those are the waivers, yeah. I think what Pat's referring to is that there were a couple of questions about. Whether or not any road improvements were needed. Road, it's just kind of like a catchall comment that we want to make sure hits in the letter. And then second one regarding landscaping. But I think based on the planning commission, given this location, those weren't really applicable.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were.
All right.
And the road width is okay?
Road is fine. I think we had spoken before too about right of way width, since this is a PennDOT road, then. Township wouldn't have any interest in having additional right of way dedicated to township only for PennDOT that comes to you, so.
Just so you know, this is not on the camp side of the road, this is on the.
The east side.
And then the open space direct line, direct fees?
Right, which I assume would be handled at the time of. Approval, right?
Okay, so yeah, if the board's ready to add any motions, it would make sense to start with the waivers.
So there's two waivers. So the first one is from section one seventy, one hundred A. And that's, the plan was prepared at a scale of one inch equals eighty feet instead of a fifteen feet or one hundred feet. For the ordinance requirements, which we think is appropriate.
Motion.
Sure.
So. Okay, motion second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one was from section one seventy, seventy-eight O. And that's pertaining to sidewalks along Marshall's Creek Road. Which again, given the location, we think is appropriate to waive that.
Motion.
Second. Comments or questions?
I don't know why I'm going to come on there.
Say again?
Just sidewalks.
This is to waiver for the sidewalks, but it's on Marshall's Creek Road.
I'm wondering why you put these sidewalks there?
No, no, they want a waiver coming in.
And get them on.
Right, right.
It could be a nice bicycle nose. Okay, so motion second, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This seems to have launched our Zoom needs.
Then the next item with that would be in the planning module, you think, or?
The subdivision plan itself. So what you did was you just granted the two requested waivers from the South of the next step, if you're ready. To add again, a motion initially approving the plan, the subdivision plan would be. Subjected to the applicant complying with and satisfying all the comments and requirements set forth from the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four township engineer review letter.
You're okay with all these, right?
Yeah, I mean, the ones that I brought up, I just wanted to make sure. It's, it sounds like when I was looking at the review letter, I thought maybe the road width was an issue. But maybe it's not. And then the township regarding the open space and the rec fees. But I'm assuming there's a way to calculate those. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you already, you also addressed the way you were the sidewalks, so those were the ones that I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board.
Good.
Okay, motion.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Then the last item for Otter Lake Camp Resort would be the sewage facilities planning module. That was submitted, this is required to be. Online septic systems that they're proposing as a part of the subdivision plan. That would have been signed off on by the I C O. So much involved in that, but just to present it. It was ready to go to D P, so a motion to sign off on that and submit to D P for prior copies.
I think I might still need Sean's signature on the show.
And I wasn't getting signatures until you all threw it, so it'll be next week.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah. Township ends a lot.
Motion.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ben. All right, there is no.
Oh, go ahead.
Old business. Right? And that brings us to new business, which is. Request from the zoning office to release the fire escrow, Martin, for ten sixty-two Lennox Road.
With nothing.
So Mark makes a motion. All second. Any comments or questions?
I have, how does Jared class this fit into this equation?
Without.
Does he? What is his title?
For what?
It says he's the one that are not there.
No, Jared.
No.
It's his house.
It's his house?
Yeah, that's why I put it on.
Oh, it's different, yeah.
Name in the document.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was.
No, there's no relation to this, no.
No, Jared, Jared sits on our economic development, admitting our revitalized.
I thought he was part of this.
No, no.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mike.
Good point, man. Well, make a motion to make the payment for request number one for the green light go project.
Also.
Any comments or questions? Want to say a little bit about?
I mean, this is again, the connectivity between traffic lights. The overall project is between Smithfield and Middle Smithfield. So our portion, we have five lights, they have four. So. That would be the proportion amount that we'd have to pay. So it's like thirty thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and forty cents. That would be our obligation for this payment. And then at the end of the day, PennDOT will reimburse us eighty percent of the entire project, so.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any comments or questions?
Are they the things that Tuskano was putting out there?
Yeah, that's what you're seeing, it looks like an umbrella.
That are right.
Yeah.
And then there's another part?
Oh, yeah, there's plenty more. And then there's a programming that actually goes back to Allentown. So they'll all be working together and can be manipulated down Allentown if needed. The whole idea is there's a tremendous emergency or, you know, disaster and everybody, so you have to get all the lights to. You know, get everybody out of town, you know, in the same direction.
It doesn't work on a daily.
No, no. So. But it's one of those projects where if we did not do it at the time of Green Light Go five years ago. It would have ultimately been a burden on the township to do it anyway, so.
It makes sense, it'd be a personal article.
Can you give that dollar amount again, M F T?
Thirty thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and forty cents.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey. I would make a motion to pass resolution zero three dash two thousand and twenty-four dash two, which is to authorize disposition of some records, some old records.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So next up for discussion is the revitalized two oh nine committee grant application recommendations. So on Tuesday night, the revitalized two oh nine committee met. And they reviewed everything that they had before them and they made. Recommendations to the supervisors. So the memo that you have in front of you has three categories of it. As a status review. The applications that the committee received that are complete are Pocono Cafe, the Value Ring. And the church at fifty-one forty-six Milford Road. So their recommendation was to approve those. Under class B, they had, the committee recommended. This go forward pending the inspection. They would like the zoning officer to inspect for any violations first. And if there are no violations, they would recommend that this project go forward. And they have all their paperwork. Class C was something that they are in favor of, which is Liberty Plaza. But as you can see, there are a lot of things that are still pending. Now, we can discuss each of these at the board's pleasure. There. Is. Each one of these folders is complete, is a complete application. As you can see, it's a lot of paperwork. It's like a mortgage document that has all the papers that they have to. Sign that don't necessarily have any information in them. But you know, the checks that they they had and all of that, so that's what these are. And these were the. Trip sheets from the efficient James Breckfield. So what he did with these, and these were the things that were emailed to the board last night. For each one that had a checklist in the front. Of what it is that was submitted and what is still outstanding if applicable, and then copies of it in the back. So what this short memo from James on behalf of the revitalized two oh nine committee. Describes the project, gives the cost estimate and the grant request for each of these items. And what you received last night is here, so it's. Up to your pleasure of what you'd like to discuss now. We have no public work session this week because tomorrow the office is closed. And I know we're anxious to start spring cleaning, so, but I mean, I can pull these up on my computer. We can share screen and do it that way. You can take a look at these in front of you, or what would you like to do? What is the board's pleasure?
Well, I mean, I think that. It's commendable that we're at this point, but. I think that we should have at least. Go through these for our own satisfaction and also have an opportunity to talk to James. Regarding each of these applications. So I mean, we do have a workshop.
Next Friday.
Right, on the fifth, is it? Right, on the fifth, is it?
It's next Friday.
It's prior to our next meeting.
Is there anything for discussion now? Why not discuss now?
So I'm kind of here. If you have a question, kind of question, pretty cut and dry.
So this is the church, the brick church that's at fifty-one forty-six Milford Road. The application is to replace six windows. It's pretty straightforward. Um the quotes came in, the cost estimate is eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So right now, uh most of the windows are covered with plastic roofing. And I had Mesko come and give me a quote. Uh they called Clear Choice. Uh they're a local commercial. They came. Uh took all the measurements. And I talked to them four times to get.
You can love this one.
And put you just like two days ago. So it's been like almost three weeks since I had them. Still not close to them. And then James asked me to try to get a third, so I called a third because it really is on too commercial. There's no places close. Called a third and he said uh. That his company was too far. It was like.
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea. Right, I mean, the whole idea of that really was, so it's in line with our requirements for bidding.
Yeah.
You know, the phone quotes.
Yeah.
Um and like you said, it simply is unresponsive. That that's a bit.
Yeah.
Um so. And I appreciate, you know, at least, you know, doing what we have to do.
So Pat, um if you can see, this is what you're talking about.
Uh so this is the first time this list uh in the applications are reported board supervisors. So what I was suggesting is to. Take your time to look through them. I will look at the you adopted a resolution and there's a. And which we I haven't looked at for probably close to a year, I think, is when we did it. Uh so I think it should just make, the board should take its time to make sure that these projects or these these uh applications are consistent with the resolution. And are in line with the uh the the criteria associated with the uh program. And then when and if the board is ready to approve one or more of them. Uh maybe at a future meetings. Uh it does include, I believe there was an acknowledgement form and there's a number of other steps that the applicants need to comply with. Uh following or concurrently with the board's uh action.
Well, I mean, to to your part from the set, I mean, I think I would say that, you know, where I sit, I mean, I imagine. I mean, I have all confidence that the committee has done their due diligence and, you know. Um but like Pat says, you know, um we should just make sure that. Get one more set of eyes on it, if you will.
Yeah, the committee, the committee is a recommending body, so they're recommend.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, my only question is the the grant does go up to twenty thousand dollars. And your cost estimate is eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
So for like. An extra twelve, what is it? Uh twelve hundred dollars. Do you think you could get somebody to power wash and paint? That side? It's just a suggestion. You don't have to answer. Are you gonna have these? Yeah, why not?
Well, if you know any place to get flowers, you may want to do that.
But it's gonna look beautiful. It'll be a thousand percent.
Yeah, our object is to make it livable. So that's really the start of it. I did spend, I got three very hard dumpsters there and cleaned it out at one point, so.
Do you still have bats in it?
There they are. There's five hundred and thirty-seven.
Wow.
Bats. It's the largest bat sanctuary in Milwaukee.
Inside the church?
In the in the attic.
Wow.
Yeah.
Five hundred and how many?
Thirty-seven right now. Twice a twice a year. For the state. Because they're very much needed. And it helps them determine if there's something going on. With the population because most houses or barns have a couple dozen.
So.
Up in five hundred plus. It's massive.
So out of curiosity.
Yes.
Uh I suspect part of the, and I think you mentioned it, your grant application for the windows. Uh it's approved, it's intended to have the the building habitable, right?
Correct.
Are you, are the bats staying?
So they will, it's sealed from the house, so yes. My my, I have more of a concern with that. But there it's completely, well, it will be. Right now I have it sectioned off, but. The object is to make it uh, I don't need somebody to comment about it, so yes. Will be addressed.
And how did you count them? Just again, out of curiosity.
Pat Griffin would ask.
So twice a year, I paid somebody with me and one of us sits in a lawn chair in the back. And one of us sits in a lawn chair by two oh nine, just like this, and sit like this. And when it starts to get dark, one, two, three, four, five.
Really?
And yeah, so normally about three hundred to four hundred go out the back. And out the front come about a hundred.
That's wild.
And then when they have the babies, then they're even born.
Wow.
And what kind?
It's pretty special.
Yeah, what kind of, do you know what kind of that? Are they protected?
What kind of brown? Brown.
So.
Imagine insects they're consuming. Right?
Well.
That's what they do, right?
Yeah, they're saving us. Between them and the lights that are over the turn, we only have to get out of here.
So you are trying to make it habitable, so it would be.
Beautiful inside. It's all hardwood floors. There is a second floor. The attic would be would be sealed off, so that. The object is just to have it be like a studio or something minor. But it would they are lashing on at the sewer and water.
Is there any historical significance?
So we have a right away, not even, we own on each side of the church. I put like a driveway. And then there's room in the back.
Oh, is it?
And then I did build a wall out front that you can. Park, it's not, you know, two oh nine, sixty miles, I know that's not the best. But you can.
Is there any historical um?
Uh not that I know of. I don't, uh.
These windows have not been replaced since the explosion of nineteen sixty-four, so.
Uh uh sections in front. And drunk hit.
Right, I remember that.
Yeah.
Put over on.
It's a good car.
Yeah.
I remember that.
How how old is it?
I don't know. But the object is at this moment, I mean, it could be ten years or five years till I go further with the 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 depends. I mean, it might start sooner than later. The windows might give you some. But it is pretty rough looking. Right now.
Well, this is a fabulous project. I can't wait to see it finished. It'll make a world of difference. It's right out on two oh nine. It'll be awesome.
Starts with you, please.
Well, now it started with the committee. Now we have it. Right? No, thank you for coming. So there's that one. And then there's uh the Value Inn and the Pocono Cafe. So the Pocono Cafe is in your packets uh also. Wanted to look at that. So I thought at least we could discuss the first three that are the the that are complete. Um and not pending any items. So let's see.
No, I understand. I mean, that one we we spoke about at the workshop.
Let's see, so Pocono Cafe uh. They have everything complete and they are looking to pave.
They have pretty good textures in that that we saw.
Yeah, so facing the parking lot from the road on the right side. Yeah, this is a description of the paving job that they would like. And their cost estimate for that was twenty thousand dollars. And they included um pictures of everything that they wanted to do, like where their where their the brass line is. And all of that. So if anyone's ever been there, it is a pretty rough um. Rough area to drive into park and it it will make a difference physical from two oh nine. And then the third.
So let's go back there. I'm just concerned with the the uh language on. And B, where it says provided there are no compliance violation, is that also applicable to A, B, and C?
Well, wait a minute, where where are you?
I'm on B.
Right.
H two.
Right.
And the first thing it says is provided there are no compliance.
Correct, right.
Has that been sort of verified for the first three? Didn't say are complete.
The zoning officer was not requested to go to any of them because there isn't any visible violation there of anything.
Okay.
So um if somebody calls, they could. There's been no complaint.
And there may have been on B.
There was on, there was on B.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was B? Where where was that?
The Dutchman.
Dutchman?
Yeah. So they would, their uh job. They would like to uh paint, they'd like to power wash and paint. It's the cigarette building. That they would like to do and some landscaping. The concern was um that they there is signage that doesn't follow the zoning ordinance. So they just want to make sure that when it comes off, it stays off. So but that would be for the zoning officer to go out and look at first. You know, for it, so. Yeah, how how are you with that? I mean, it's pretty straightforward. On that, you have a full one. I don't know if you want to look at this anymore.
No.
And then. Then there was the Value Inn. Um which is also under a complete. So their project consists of replacing the roof shingles and and facing. On the part that you can see from two oh nine, and there's a diagram as in the back of exactly what it is. Um there's a landscaping plan for route two oh nine and to replace some lighting that is visible along route two oh nine that's on the building. They would like to replace that with dark sky compliant uh fixtures. So I guess the easiest way, picture is worth a thousand words. That's in the back of the packet. That was sent this thing. So here's your diagram. If you'd like to see it. So does the board have any comments going forward on any of these? On the Pocono Cafe, the Value Inn, or the church at Milford Road at this time?
Uh huh.
No? Okay, so the Dutchman is pending inspection and then what is incomplete. Um is Liberty Plaza. Their application was for the painting of two buildings. Their cost estimate was fourteen thousand dollars, so the grant request from us is seven thousand dollars. Um but they're they're pending a bunch of things such as three quotes. They don't have the three. Um an indemnification form, a preliminary approval, acknowledgement form and like that, but that was just to get this on your radar. So does the board have any other questions or comments regarding these applications?
No.
Okay, so then the next step then would be for us to assemble these. And Pat, would you like to see the first three that are complete so that you're reviewing it at?
Yeah, I mean, what I'll do is.
At the same time, will you?
Yeah, I'll look at the applications and whatever you have in files and. I kind of just look at, refresh my memory on the resolution and the criteria that you adopted a while ago.
That's all in each packet.
And then.
Each packet and checked off.
Perfect. And then to the extent the board is, I guess you're gonna, it sounds like you might just got to touch on it again at your work session. The extent that at the work session, if the board's comfortable moving one or more of them forward, you can authorize maybe specifically which ones. Uh as an agenda item for your next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if after your work session, if you look at it and you you the board says, you know what? The church at fifty-one forty-six Milford Road, I'm not just saying that because you're here to see me, I'm just saying the board would say, you know what, that one. Uh we think we think it fits what we were looking for with respect to the grant. Uh it it fits within the criteria. We're okay. Let's put that on the agenda for potential action at your next board meeting.
I have one last question. If Clear Choice does get me. The estimate. Would you guys still like me to submit a seal? Even though they've already asked for them all.
They think you can amend the file by adding your your additional quote, especially if they come in lower, you may want to have them.
Well.
And you may want, then you might want it.
I tried four times.
I know, I know.
I I would, I wouldn't pursue it anymore if I do have to.
You're good with what you have.
Yeah. It's not gonna hold anything up, but if they come in lower and you choose to amend your um application to include. Power washing and painting around the windows or flower boxes or something, you could always do that. It won't delay anything. But it's it's a great project. All all of these are great projects. They'll make a demonstrable difference on two oh nine. For it, so, okay. So with no further.
I would just make one comment, just an observation that. Um what what we did by doing this or enacting this years or so ago. Um I saw on uh the news, I think it was channel thirteen. Um that I believe it's Milford is now doing something very similar. Up to five thousand dollars. Per business, so. Um they had, it was a bit slightly different from our model, but. Uh again, I think, you know, this was the model that they stole from.
I'm not so sure because the cha- there's plenty of chamber of commerces that do this, including the Milford Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
You know, for it. So we're the only township, the municipality that does it, which is why we have the twenty thousand dollar rule and like that.
Yeah, right, and that's what they did through the township of Milford.
So, okay, um any other, anything further regarding the revitalized two oh nine? Okay, any public comment? Anyone?
I saw that there was the blue arrow went out. Uh I have a lemon that solicited that, so I wear the purple.
Well.
Just just it's an observation from uh the peanut.
I do have the same shirt and tie, Pat, but I changed in the car.
Yes.
I didn't want to look too much like brothers.
Would be able to tell some part.
So Debbie, when is graduation gonna be? Fill the beans. Don't make this wait till the end of April. That's horrible.
It'll snow, you never know.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Any comments or questions?
Public comment.
Favor.